Form me or walk through that, but just to reiterate last time. We did submit the end year report, so that's on file with Desi. We did sign the certification. So there's no further advancement than we don't want to complete the end year report process. Um, but I know one of the outstanding things is still to be with her and just understand more.
I'm just saying, can we have that sent to us too, so that we can see?
And then, but, but what, what is it that you're looking for, Kersey?
There's a printout, isn't there?
The end of your report?
Yeah.
So you're looking for the actual file itself?
We've gotten a printout in the past. I don't know.
I mean, I, I could PD up on the, there's a couple of different tabs with the primary report. I could try and see what you had, or if you want to send me what you've received in the past. I could keep the whole entire file. It's probably a twenty something PDF. I could send that to you, but if you want to send me what you've received in the past, or where your expectations are, I can send it to you.
Yeah, we have received a PDF in the past that we were told was the end of your report. Um, it was like a couple of pages. I don't know what.
I can have Liz look and see what might be in Novus.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, I'm not sure we got it last year. We've definitely got it years before. Um, so. I'm just saying, she may have to dig a bit, but that's all I'm looking for. Then we would. Send it out to share it with the rest of the committee. Later.
Yep, I can follow up on that.
Okay, right.
Percy, is it possible that Josh and I get a copy of that?
Yes, yeah, it'll, it'll definitely, yeah, so when it's sent out, if it can be sent out to, uh, the our income representatives too.
Great, thank you.
I found it.
Okay, so we're good on that. This isn't meant to be a big deal.
Yep, I got it. I'll send it to you.
Great, okay. So, uh, update on FY twenty six, uh, any? Comments from the subcommittee about the first quarterly report? So my, I had sent an email to Chris before the, and Chris and Liz before the, um. Our meeting and my one concern is that right now, the longevity is listed. It, it hasn't been paid out, has been encumbered, and it's listed as a plus. And it's a big number and it's going to be paid out because it's due by contract. I mean, almost all of it. So it's giving an artificially inflated. Impression of our budget and given that we're kind of running close to the line that concerned me, so. I had pointed that out to them. Uh, I know there's a lot of other things in play, but I think. We should encumber that or, or something if possible.
That and any other contractual payouts that haven't hit yet.
Yeah, exactly.
Clothing allowances or anything.
Yeah, I'll make sure that part of the conference is too, like convey its previous massage.
Right, so one oh two should also go through because that's the, um, that's the SSP differential. So they should have covered code one oh two and then any contractual codes.
Okay. So, anything else? Anyone? Seeing none? Okay, uh, then, uh, FY twenty seven, so. We've announced the seminar timing. Do we have a location for the first one at least?
Hmm, if that was my job, then no, um, but we can establish one. I think I need to know what. We're anticipating.
You mean how many people? So that's, I put it held it in the school committee room on, I mean, given the turnout easily and still had extra room. I'm hoping we will have more people this time, but I don't know. So I think discourse lab, if it's available, school committee room is a fallback for the first one. And the other ones, we may, well.
Okay.
But that gets us started.
Added it to my to do list. Did you want, we had talked at one point about moving around a bit? Like go to a couple of other schools. I feel like we talked about that. Maybe it was just in my head.
I, I don't think we talked about it, but I was actually just about to ask what people thought of it. Because it occurred to me, like if we wanted to do one. On the west side of town and one on the east side of town. I mean, they're all different topics, so in some ways I feel like. It's, I don't, like, that doesn't feel like it. If we were doing three that were like the same focus, then I'd feel more strongly about that, but. I mean, I could go either way.
So I'd say the one thing, no matter where we have it, is we have to be sure we've got good audio visual.
Yeah, that's, that was what I was thinking. It's like, I don't, I, it will not be as good. My experience in the elementary schools, it's, there's nothing that's going to be as good as either of those two rooms in the high school. So I guess I would say. Given that I'm, I'm guessing that remote participation is, is going to be significant compared to in person, maybe keep it. Where that, those logistics are the best in our control.
Mm hmm.
So that'd be high school. Okay.
Gibbs can be a great, the Gibbs black box is gray space, so we could do that. For one of them.
Okay.
They have great, that's great audio visual and we can make it hybrid. That'd be the only other. Space I would potentially recommend.
I mean, having never been inside the Gibbs, I'd be more than happy to go to the Gibbs. But I, I don't know, I, I don't, I don't feel, have a feeling either way.
Yeah, um.
Why don't I ask about discourse lab?
Okay.
And we'll, we'll go from there if it's available for all three, maybe we just do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that makes sense, but that way it, it gets rid of the, where is it? Question, which, you know, it was here, now it's there and, and people get confused and then they decide not to go because they're not sure. Um, okay, so, um. Laura, let's. You and I work on drafting. The announcement and that you were going to send to PTOs.
Yeah, sure.
Have it by Liz and then we'll start working on more, um, announcement after that. Um, it's, we have to be kind of careful what, how we're raising it and stuff, so that's why I'm like. We will go between the three of us. But she was going to send a, was it a text or a?
No, I was there as a Facebook group for PTO leads. That I had just thought I could, you know, post a save the date so that at least those people in town. Have it on their radar. Um, the nice thing about that group is that. I mean, I think Wes also has a lit, Wes also has a list of those people. The Facebook group is bigger because it includes people who've sort of been engaged in the past and. Aren't in leaders like, like me. Um, and so it's a good place to find. Some of those people. And then I think also whatever we do, we should post as quickly as possible to Arlington parents. On Facebook, um, and then. Wes can, um, hopefully ask for it to go into the PTO and principal newsletters. Um, but I'd love to have that happen. What's today, like maybe?
SAP.
Beginning of next week, before Thanksgiving, to get it on people's calendars, because otherwise it comes up. Really fast.
Yeah.
All of us.
Okay. Um, so. Maybe, can we do this, Laura? You and I work on language, Liz, we'll get approval from you. Um, and then Laura, can you work on? Coordinating with everyone for getting it.
Yeah, sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, great. And Liz has shared the original set of slides. I haven't had a chance to look at them, but that's, we'll work on that next.
I, I looked at them briefly right after you sent them, Liz, and is there a lot? Of, there's a lot at the back of that deck that wasn't part of the presentation, right?
Right.
I just got confused when I saw how enormous it was and I, I was vaguely remembering that we had like sort of done a lot of. Sort of back and forth there, okay?
Because we, we started with some of what I shared at Civic Academy and then we. Tabled a bunch of it, but kept it, kept it there in case we wanted to use it to reference at the end of the presentation.
For like answering questions and stuff, yeah.
So I'm going to see if the discourse is available for the dates. Um, provide our communications team with those dates and times, have Liz Diggins make us the Zoom registration links so that people can. Sign up for the Zoom if they want to do it virtually. And then I'm going to have comms make us a flyer with all those details on it.
Okay.
That, are those my steps? And also review any language that Laura makes and.
Yeah. As part of that, there needs to be, we need to be passing them language about what the forums are about, so. You don't have, you have the dates and stuff, but we need to be passing, we need to give some additional language.
That's fine. Once they start, they'll make off, they'll like mock something up and then we can give them whatever and they can adjust it. But I wanted them to get started on making it because that takes time while we get language and other details together.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Something else I've thought about as we've been discussing this is that we may. Want to be thinking about having some subset of. Various slides from the different presentations as. Something to take on the road to go to PTOs if they're interested, or if they want to bring a group together to, um. Hear things.
I think it would be great to offer that. Because I think there are people who will show up to a PTO meeting who are not as likely to also. Show up and like, I most. That there, a lot of those are on Zoom, so not hard for like meet for, to do. Um, and it could be, I don't, I, I don't think li, like it could be just one of us. I don't think Liz has, right, like it's.
It'd just be.
Yeah. Especially if we started doing it sort of. Like if it helped drum up interest in showing up to the larger forums later, like.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, like do one and, yeah.
That would be amazing because I've started getting questions from the principals about what they should or shouldn't say. At PTO meetings, like I got this, I got text from principal yesterday headed into a PTO meeting. Saying if this comes up, what do I say? We've given him talking points to use with staff, so I said stick to those. Um, but I think the support from you all at some of those meetings would be very appreciated because they know. There's, but you know, they, they know they're walking a line because they're not elected officials and so. They're trying to be careful and they also don't want to, um, get in front of you all with messaging, so I know they would appreciate that.
I, I think that would be great, um. To, great, and I think the. If, if we know we want to do that, I can reach out now to see. What people, like if people have meetings scheduled in January, that would be the right. Forum for it, or if people want to, like sort of how PTOs might, whether they're interested and. How they, it would be most helpful to them.
So, in the past, what we have done is. We weren't able to go to every single PTO and also all of them didn't necessarily want us. So we did was we had a deal with the PTO that was sponsoring that.
Oh, that they might, they could invite.
Well, it was either at the start or the end of the meeting and that we would be allowed to invite anyone else who wanted to attend. To that part, understanding that it's disrupting their meeting, but people were happy to do that and honestly, it didn't. There wasn't a big cross traffic, but.
Yeah.
Um.
I mean, I know because there was recent discussion on the Facebook group that, like the. There's actually a, a wide away, a rate, bleh, there's a wide range of the ways the PTOs are holding meetings right now, so. Like I think it'll really differ across school.
Okay, so I think. It's a good idea. My concern is that. We need to, our priorities need to be first coming up with a plan which will work for the schools. Um, second, the forums, getting people to understand, uh. And then third, doing extra stuff. Now the extra stuff can also be done. It doesn't have to be done just the three of us. It can, we can pull in other. Um, school committee members if they're interested, but I'm saying we need to. I don't want to commit to anything until I know that we've at least got a really good handle on the model. So, I mean, on what we're proposing to a long range plan.
Oh, that model, okay, yeah.
That model, yeah.
I thought you meant the model of a information session.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay, okay, yes, that makes sense.
Yeah, so, um, so if you want to like. Sound people out, but.
I could just import, yeah, yeah.
That's fine and say, you know, we're still figuring everything out, so. Okay.
Okay.
Anything else about, well. Okay, so that's the forums, um, so then the next. It, it gets confused between whether it's planning for FY twenty seven or, or a long range budget, um. But what are? Uh, basically, we need to be prepping the next two, this meeting and the next one are prepping for the long range plan many, meaning that's on the fifth. And, uh, I'm wondering Liz, how you and Chris are doing in terms of modeling and, and things. For what our costs would be.
So. We're meeting with, I'm sorry, that's a big question. I'm not sure. How to answer it, um, where. We've modeled out the projection for salaries for FY twenty seven. It's about a five percent increase. Um, if everybody were to stay, which nobody ever does, like not, everybody doesn't ever always stay. So it's probably closer in reality to about four and a half percent. Um, we're meeting with, uh, town officials tomorrow, um, Julie and Jim. To take a look at models. We cannot manipulate and they, they had discovered, I guess, in the model they were operating with. A couple of errors on the backend because Sandy Poehler had developed this sheet and. Um, knows how to manipulate it and if you do that wrong, you break it on the front end. So they were having him recalibrate it a bit and I. There, so he's going to give it back to them and, and I think. Um, we should always do that with them so that we don't. Do something wrong and, and. Mess something up, so. We're co, we're going with the data that we have. We have projected costs for salaries and are actively thinking about. Ways we can streamline things for next year. Um, with the administration and collecting their staffing model proposals and collecting their. Uh, general or, uh, operating fund proposals at, at level funding and at level service. Um, and so with. That information in hand, we're going to walk into that meeting. If there's other modeling you were expecting us to have done by now. Please tell me what it is, because I think that's what we've done so far.
I guess. I was. Um. So. I'm not sure I understand what the meeting is tomorrow. Are you proposing a model for how we would do? Long range plan for the next thing? Is this just showing what to, what FY twenty seven might look like or what?
I mean, we meet frequently, um, we meet every Friday. So it's our regular Friday conversation. Um, I imagine they. Will want to take a look at the model itself and talk about any possibilities that we talk about now. So we are, we would bring any model suggestions to take a look at that we discussed today.
Okay. Um.
We've talked about breaking out, out of district costs. We've talked about one bucket. Um, we've told you what the salary increase is. So we're, we're willing to walk in with whatever, like, let's see what happens if. This model, the, they are looking to. Right now, as I understand it, the select board ranges. And what they would like to see for an override number, somewhere between fifteen. And a willingness for seventeen, but I think those are the extreme edges of, of where folks are. So at some point, we need to land on a number and I think what Jim and Julie would like to do is, is. Take a look at assumptions. Jim's looking at revenue assumptions, um, and I know Len has had some back and forth with him about that. And we are charged is to take a look at our year over year increase and. Make some proposals. It would be great for me to have a range to operate within. That they could model out.
Okay. Um. I guess, so when you say you've modeled out the projection for salaries for next year, it's five percent or for. Going forward, you think it's like five percent?
For next year, it's five percent. I haven't done out years and we'd be bargaining a new teacher contract, so.
Okay, and is there, um, when you said without. If you take out people who leave or whatever, but are you replacing them, but as a lower level, or are you? The four and a half percent is just they're gone.
It is five, it's, I have not, I, I'm, the four and a half is something of a guess.
Mm hmm.
Having to do with vacancy, potential savings. Any efficiencies we identify between this year and next year, because I think we could identify some. If we have a kindergarten class that's the same size, for example. Um, it's possible we don't need as many first grade sections. Um, so we can find some efficiencies that will reduce the salary increase. I have not taken retirements out. I have not done like a. FTE assumption. Model. I could, but that's getting ahead of. Some things, I think, and so I haven't done, I mean, I talked to you at one point about. Doing a potential bargaining scenarios mockout. Uh, we can do these exercises. I'm right now pretty focused on getting our principals and administrators the data they need. To give us proposals, so that's what we've been, that's what I've been pretty focused on for the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, no, I think the problem is we're having to do two things at once and they haven't given us extra people.
And out of, and out of order, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's one of the challenges is that, that, you know, before we know this, it's hard to know this, but before we know this, it's hard to do this, so. It's a four point nine five percent. With this year's staff in next year's contracts.
Is that including everybody marching up or is that the same? Okay, so it's marching up, but not sideways?
What? Oh, it doesn't include lane changes. It includes step.
Okay.
Changes.
Okay.
So there will be some lane changes, but also there will be some turnover, though that usually comes out in wash.
Yeah, okay. Um.
That's also based on October thirty first. I haven't been able to refresh this because we were encumbering salaries, so I had to hold on a refresh.
Okay. Um. Okay, so I. Um, okay, so I have things to show, but I haven't, let me, give me a sec to get them open.
Hold on.
Sorry, can I just step in while you're doing that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, I mean, it, it would be helpful in Chris and Liz to look at the retirements that we've had for the last two or three years. Um, you know, just count how many they are. Is it, is it an average of eight? Is it ten? Is it five? I'm not sure. And then we can model what our retirement savings, what our retirement turnover cost is. Because I know that sometimes we, we fill those positions at a mid-level step, but, um. We can, we can make a reasonable assumption about what step those are, on average, what step those are going to land on. And then calculate the, the, the savings amount.
So if, so right now we have one. We have eight. And we, if we were to hire in at step five, we have a savings of about two hundred and seventy thousand. Last year, I think we had closer to six. We have more coming in right now than we had last year.
More.
Retirements.
Okay, yeah, so I went back and looked at the, um, data that Rob's been giving us each year and. Um, we've had between one and four retirements. I mean, this, this is per what he's told us. But there were one to four retirements a year, um, average was two point five. Resignations have averaged thirty eight. Um, replacements have averaged twelve. Replaced, uh, people on leave is five and new positions is eighteen. Um. Now, that's just. I'm, I, you know, those, the thing he just showed us a couple of weeks ago, that's, I went through that and pulled them all from the past. Uh, time, so if we've got eight this year. That's helpful and is much higher than what we've seen in the past.
Yep.
Which kind of makes sense, right? We're, we're getting to, okay, um.
And that's been helped out by the AEA. Because they have been reminding folks about the incentive and if they let us know ahead of time.
Okay. Yes, so that's good, um. Give me. Sorry, I have to. Okay, I'm going to do things and it's going to be kind of messy. I'm sorry. Um, okay, so let me share. Okay, so. This is data that I think would be useful for sharing at the long range plan meeting. Um, I'll share. Okay, so first, okay, so I'm going to have to flip through a bunch of screens because I don't have them all. Oh, actually, give me a sec, let me, let me. Stop. Okay. Okay. So. Okay, I'm going to have to flip through screens, but, okay, so what I have is. This is.
You can't see, oh, there it is, nevermind.
Okay, so this is total expenditures per student. Um, town manager twelve versus Arlington. I can't do state anymore because they're not providing a state number. Um, so we're still consistently lower. The next one is I. Here, I've added this, uh. Do you see the, the orange box at the end? That's taking all of the override adds. And adding them on to FY twenty four, just to give a sense of. People are going to say, oh, but we've added all this money to the budget, the school's budget. And, um, this is how much it works out to per person or per people, uh, even with those override adds.
So what's the red butt dot?
The, the red dots are Arlington.
Right, and then, right, so but on that line, the twenty twenty four.
This is the, this is what we spent in twenty twenty four.
Okay.
The, uh, box is twenty twenty. The, uh, box is twenty twenty-four plus. One point seven and three point one million. Added as a per pupil amount to the twenty-four number.
So when did we, so we didn't?
We, we added those in twenty-five and twenty.
Okay, okay, that's what I, that, okay, that's what I was.
Yeah, but the, um. I don't have those numbers, they don't give that yet, so this is just trying to show that.
Proportional. So just, just frame it, um. The, the box is. The twenty-four number as if we had received our extra funding that year.
That year instead of not till the next year.
The additional extra years, yes.
So the point is that even with the extra money, we're still below the town manager twelve.
Yes, that is the point I'm trying to make. Help me make it.
Will help me, I'm a little lost, so. But we got. What are the one point seven and the three point one?
We got three point one and twenty-five and one point seven and twenty-six.
Right, okay, okay, okay. So. Why not put twenty? Why not put the twenty-five and twenty-six?
That data is not available yet.
Cause the actuals, but like as a box.
I'm trying to show it.
Cause it'll be, there'll be other numbers, there'll be other increases in there. We can't calculate those, that number yet. This is just pretending, if we had gotten all that money in twenty-four, what would twenty-four spending have looked like?
Got it, and we didn't get it in, until twenty-five and twenty-six and.
But even if.
Manager number will also have kept going up, though.
Yeah, yeah, even if we had gotten all the money. In twenty-four, we would still be below.
Yeah.
Manager twelve.
Okay.
Okay.
Maybe it might be helpful. To put the years, like, to explain the one, seven and the three, one a bit. I don't know, in the title or like in smaller letters underneath?
Um, I can think about how to do it, but that's.
If we were gonna use it, I. I'm not sure it's clear, because it's on twenty-four, but it's four, twenty-five and twenty-six.
Right. I think this is something we'll just have to explain. Cause anyway, it, it, what it's showing is that we, even with those ads, we're still significantly below. Per pupil spending.
Yep.
Okay, so then. The next one is looking. It shows in district spending. Is also less. Per people. And then finally. Out of district, nope, that's the wrong one, sorry. This is out of district stu- spending per pupil. Um, and then this is supported by. Arlington has over, since twenty seventeen. Uh, if you look at the number of students who are out of district as a proportion of the students with IAPs. We have. Gone from a high of over fourteen percent down to six something. Um, and really, we were out of proportion to the other. The averages of the other districts in the past, but we are, um. We have. Gone. In a direction, meeting them and perhaps surpassing them by building out programs. So. What this is showing is we're not spending. Even though our num- the numbers that are showing up and that the, uh. Deficits and stuff are large, it's not because we are spending. Too much, and in fact, we have dealt with the out-of-district stuff. Um, and brought that down considerably. And. Then. Okay. Um. So the one, this one is, I was just playing with this now. Um, and it's gonna be confusing, I'm sorry, uh, let me try and get it a little bit bigger. Okay, so this is all of our out-of-district spending. Um, this, can you see when I highlight it all? Okay, so this row is looking at how much has the money changed year to year? Right from the year previous, so in, um. It, it, here, we went up by one point nine million. From FY seventeen to FY eighteen. In FY nineteen, we went down eight hundred thousand, we went down another one point five million, we went up a million. Down a million, et cetera, so, um, then I tried to. Model if we had in FY twenty seventeen, i- in this line. I tried to model if we had a reserve starting at two million. And we took money in, in or out of it. Would we be able to? Stay solvent and FY eighteen would have been really close. But the rest of the years would have been fine. So then. I tried to model, um. Saying that out-of-district was a. Or out-of-district costs are assumed to be seven, seven million, and then we have two million as a reserve. And then I use the actual data to say, how does that look? So in, uh, FY seventeen, we would have. And, and I'm, any money that we weren't spending out of that seven million was going into the reserve. And so in FY seventeen. Um, we would have spent six, seven, six point seven million, and there'd be two point two in the reserve. In FY eighteen, there'd be, uh, we would have spent eight point seven, and now there'd only be two ninety in the reserve. Um, and anyway, you can see, it goes on and on, uh, and we stay solvent. So that's good, but two million is a big reserve. So then I looked at the same model, but I just got rid of the year that's really bad. And looked at it going forward, so again. Doing a model where the base assumption is seven million. And this time, a reserve of one million. And that's this, and so, uh, with the one million in FY nineteen, we would have been. At seven thou- seventy-three thousand, which is kind of close. Um, but the rest of the years would have been a lot better. And then the last one, I'm, I just started doing this, uh, where I was trying to. Say, okay, so we, let's say we have a base that we assume, and then we have it increasing. Um, and I haven't got the math, and, and we have a reserve and we're putting money in now the reserve, and I haven't got the math straight for that yet. But I'm wondering if this might be. An approach we would want to consider. And we would. This would not live in. The town manager, or, or my sense is this would not live in the town manager twelve spreadsheet. This would be something that we would do as accounting on our side. And we would have to figure out what the reserve amounts would be. And we would have to have, hold fidelity to the. Okay, if we spend less than this, when it needs to go into a reserve, if we spend more, it comes out of. Um, but it, the percent that we're increasing, the base. Would then be. Calculated into the percent increase that we would ask for, um, as the. Year-over-year increase, uh, if we're using the lump sum approach. Okay, I've apparently stupefied everyone.
Um, Kersey, is the. On the top, you're adding the first two rows and subtracting the third?
You mean at the very top?
Uh-huh.
These are your numbers.
No, but the third line is just for reference, line nine is not being used in any calculation.
Okay, so it's just the total. It says total with circuit breaker, I was trying to figure out with.
Yeah, you might want to change the color on that, if, if you present it anywhere else.
These are, I. I took this from Liz's spreadsheet, so it's, and I didn't tidy it all, so.
Yeah.
I was using, I'm only using line ten, that is, that is the line I'm using.
So is it with, like?
Oh, oh, this is, did I do something different? Oh, this is me, this, yeah, ignore this, ignore line nine, line nine, I was trying to figure out. How much we got in circuit breaker for that given year, so I took two years ahead. But the numbers just don't make a lot of sense.
Got it.
This was from two weeks ago, I was asked.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, ignore it here, I'll make it. There, look, it's gone. Everyone's happy, yay. Okay, so.
So that's total out-of-district transportation and tuition? That's what that is.
Yes, as, as per you, so.
As for like what I, yeah, but Chris did it, so.
Chris gave me that.
Yes. All right, um. The, the biggest challenge with this is that we know that, that out-of-district is volatile and that it's. Probably not going to have that precipitous decline that we've seen forever. It's gonna, it's gonna stabilize. Hopefully, it stays stabilized, but that it swings, and so what I don't. Know how to do is come up with a percent increase or a rate of increase. That separates that because we don't have historical data. That I, that feels usable. Because we've been in sort of that precipitous decline space for a while. It's also difficult to project out internal rate of increase, knowing. What we know about some of the work we've done to improve salaries. Um. Build out programming in district. But that we're gonna stabilize on and, and meet enrollment demand, but that now we're gonna stabilize out on enrollment, like, it's the historical data on both fronts. Is not. Super helpful for the moment that we're in. So, so like, we, we've modeled every which sort of way. But we know that that. Past is not our future.
Right.
So. What I find challenging is like. Trying to suggest a, a rate. In that reality, that doesn't either frighten or feel manageable. Like, I think four and a half sounds reasonable and manageable. And it's frightening because of the volatility of. Special education out of district. It's heartening, though, to see. This model out of a reserve fund because it, that is absorbing that volatility. In the model you did.
So I think.
Yeah, it's, it, it actually typically isn't that volatile, right? I mean, if you take out the COVID changes in twenty and twenty-one, you know, you're, you've got a pretty good, pretty, pretty steady downward trend. And then we're bouncing back up pretty steadily, but it's, it's not. Other than the twenty twenty-one, you know, COVID stuff, it's not bouncing around a lot. So, I mean, we did have an occasion. Many years ago, where there were some people that moved into town that had expensive residential placements. They had to move in from out of state for that to be a, a sudden issue. Very, very, you know, white elephant situation, but other than that, um, you know, these are, these are not really. A- as volatile as people portray them to be.
Well, but like.
Could we use, okay, so could we pick? The base number. Um, like, as, as of now, and then use the past few years of. What the out-of-district inflationary increases have been as the rate of rise.
Sure.
Say that again, Kersey.
Okay, so we pick a number, and I'm saying, let's pick FY twenty-six as our base. Right, so that's why I was saying, like, seven million. Seven million is our assumption. And then we inflate it. Using, say, the past three years of what, how, um, out-of-district tuitions have inflated.
So. Nine percent? Or including, so FY twenty-three through twenty-five, or FY twenty-four through twenty-six?
I would say twenty-four through twenty-six.
Nine percent. Which, like, I, Len, I, I hear what you're saying, but like, some of the changes are, you know, minus nine percent, plus eighteen percent.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about our internal ones, I'm saying, how has the state rates of tuition?
Oh.
Changed. Not our internal stuff.
Okay, hold on. Yeah, the, yeah. For the state.
Yeah.
So it's been, so it's typically closer to three or four, it's close, we're usually somewhere between three and four, but then that one year, we had the big jump, and then we've gotten the. Notices over the last couple of months that they're doing that, they're thinking of, some of them are gonna do that again. The big jump.
Okay, so what was the big jump and what, how many did it go for?
Nineteen percent in twenty-four?
And then it's been three or four percent since?
Yeah, between that, yep. Yeah, it was three, three, six, seven last year and this year, I think it's three oh three.
Three, three, six, seven. And then there was one year where it was nineteen, and now they're talking about, okay, so. I would say, what if we? Average those three numbers? If they're going three years between a big jump? So nineteen plus. So eight, five.
What I wonder, Kersey, is would it be worthwhile, because every district. Places with a, with different strategies and relationships, so like, we have. Strong relationships, obviously, with lab, and we, there are credits associated, um, with our membership in that programming. We have. We, we try to work with collaboratives when we can. Um, and what I wonder is if you were to take our tuitions that we're paying. For students we've had through the last several years. Or if we did, like, if we normed by student, number of students we have out of district, what's our tuition inflation rate internally? Would that be worth looking at against the state? Just knowing there's that big one-year swing for the state.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Does that make sense? Am I making sense to you? Chris has a look at his face, okay, um. I'm saying, like, what's our tuition inflation rate? We know our total out-of-district spending. But what I haven't done is gone back and said, okay. What are, how many kids are we paying for each year? What are we paying per student if you were to average all those tuitions together? So then the next year, what are we paying per student?
But that, that gets into the. But that, that gets into the, um.
Cuz the amount per student has been going up for us every year, it's just that the number of students has been going down and so that makes our total number look. Whacko, not what typical, not what other districts.
Okay, I think, so I don't think we have to. Finish this now, it's, I'm suggesting that this is. Part of our proposal that instead of. Or, I mean, I think it's something to look at. Not saying it's definite, I'm saying it's something to look at, that it seems to actually be working and the numbers are. Better than I would have guessed and, uh, so we've, you know, a one million dollar reserve is doable. Right, and, um. We just have to, but, but then we have to recognize what our rules are that. We're assuming X for out of district spending and if we don't spend X, then the extra needs to go into the reserve. And that that's how we're buffering ourselves against and, and that that reserve may get quite large. But. I mean, we can figure out. And, and we also have the circuit breaker as kind of our backup reserves, and maybe we don't have to have all that money. In a. We don't have to have it all just sitting there that will, we could. Have, you know, we could run our, our reserve closer to the bone and then knowing that we still have the circuit breaker from. The current year as our backup, so we don't go broke.
I would, uh, love it if you could send me this Kirsty and all the other analysis you've done, which I think is really well done, thank you. And I think what, uh, you and I can chat for a sec about. Whether it's worth digging into tuitions, it might be more analysis than is necessary, frankly.
I think it'll be good to have a reason why we're pegging a certain number. That we. Because then this, we're going to, we can estimate what the school system needs, but we need to. Then increase that by a smidge to account for the inflation that's going on in this, for the, uh. Out of district. Tuitions.
Okay.
So.
I mean, it, it, are there for the in district costs? Or for our total overall bucket, if like our proposal is sort of one allocation for the schools similar to how it operates for the town? Could folks give me like a zone for percentage that I, that we can have Jim and Julie. Work on and model out for us so that, to, to sort of, well, a lot of what they're doing is they're adjusting assumptions to impact the bottom line, so. I don't want to ask them to model assumptions that are non-starters for you all. I think if they.
So, yeah, so I think we've, we've, we've covered it a little bit, but to be explicit. We would be comfortable with a, you know, I would be comfortable with a class, a collapsed model at four point five percent. If there's some mechanism to address out of district costs separately.
Thank you.
That does nothing to the long range plan because that's basically what's in there now, but that's life.
So the mechanism is the reserve, Len, I'm just trying to.
The, no, the, I mean, the, the reserve is, is important, but we already have the circuit breaker backup at the reserve. It's more the separate increase that we've been talking about modeling the base going up from seven million by. Nine percent or eight percent, whatever it is. Instead of having that big huge bucket running at a higher rate, we only have this smaller bucket running at a.
Running at a higher rate. So it takes, it takes the out of district out of the, what we now, the six and a half percent sped. And puts it its own line.
Yes, and we take the others, the other special ed, put it all in one bucket together.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I think Kirsty, what you're intending to model out there is actually holding that reserve. As like within, you said within us, within our oversight, not as a separate line in the long range plan. But as it's like as part of how we operate to manage out of district. Spending and then we, there's one bucket with one rate increase, or am I misunderstanding?
Doesn't, it, it could be either way.
It could be either way.
Yes, it doesn't, effectively, it doesn't make a difference. But either way, what I'm suggesting. Uh, is that we would need to. That bucket would need to be held to the goes in and out of the reserve.
Seven million.
At seven. Yeah, if, if we don't spend seven million on out of district, then we need to put the extra of that into. The reserve.
We can't spend it somewhere else.
Right.
What I like about that incorporated into one bottom line. Len, is that it allows us. Within that one, so what would happen is if all that's one bottom line, if out of district and in district are all one bottom line. Then, and it's four and a half percent. Then we are managing the sped reserve and we have a model for doing so, we know what our. Assumption is, but if we wanted to shift that assumption, we have the ability to do that, if we find over ten years that we only spend six million. Then we don't need to keep. Managing sped reserve that way, we could adjust those assumptions within it without needing to go back. In long range planning and have a conversation about what the increase rate should be on out of district. Oh, but I'm also okay with breaking it out, but if we break it out, I don't know what percent to propose for out of district increase.
Well, we just say we, we need to, we're, we're working on figuring out what that number is.
But he's got to model it to figure out a bottom line.
Figure out something high. Go with the like nine.
Okay.
That's, that's what it, I mean.
Then we're at instead of eighteen point eight million, though, we're like nineteen million or something, like if that doesn't.
It's, but it's only for seven million, that's raising at nine.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this, this proposal doesn't help the overall situation unless we go to a lower percent. Increase for the big bucket, right?
Well, and I do think they are looking for our help with the overall situation, so. Are there scenarios that we are comfortable with that help with the overall situation or no?
Can we achieve level service with less dollars?
I think there are adjustments we can make in the shorter term. That don't have a devastating impact to level service.
That's not, that's not the same. Yeah, so let me propose, let me say where I am, we're locked into contracts for next year, so we stand at four and a half percent for next year. I think, um, we can make a concession for twenty eight and twenty nine. Knowing that that's gonna mean a smaller cola, cola for our contracts, right? And if we emerge from those negotiations without a smaller cola, then we're gonna have to im- impact current services. And that's gonna have to be part of the conversation, if we're not willing to do that, then let's not put that on the table. But that's something that you have to be willing to do Liz and that Kirsty and Laura need to be comfortable with as well.
So to me, this ends up being. A political question as in how much are, is the town willing to. Pay to maintain level services and so it gets into what, I mean, I know what the select board are saying, but. Do we fight for level service or do we fight for the numbers that the select board are suggesting and then we try and live within them? Um, and I'm. I would. Prefer to have level service on the table as an option.
Yeah, I mean, the thought of backsliding on some of the progress we've made, even seeing some of the, what you've mocked out Kirsty. About how we're already sliding down a bit with compared to town manager twelve, eight. It's, it's difficult for me to even ask. But what we could. So I'm, this is, I'm pretty new at all of this. So I'm still wrapping my head, but what I keep. Like, I feel like we're talking about, like, I, it's not clear to me what our. I don't like the word leverage, but like we, like, they're gonna make a decision about a number and I want. Us to impact that in the best, like, I want, you know, like, I, I, I don't, there, it's not, I mean, my senses, like, you know. Eighteen million isn't gonna go on the ballot, so. I don't know, I'm, I'm struggling with this sort of discussion about what we know in our hearts, we need to give our students. What they've been getting and the reality of like what our political power is in. In getting to a number, and I know that nobody here has an answer, but like when Len asks, what are you comfortable with, like. I'd rather have a lot more fun, like, am I comfortable with a lot more money, but like, I'm also realistic here.
Well, but, but right, but we also have to be able to discuss this plan, whatever the plan is of being to the voters, right?
Yes.
And so the plans that I'm comfortable with is that FY twenty seven basically stays the same. Twenty eight and twenty nine, we're trimming, we're, we're, you know, hopefully trimming based on a, on a fair labor contract. But if we can't reach a fair labor contract, then we're gonna have to trim somewhere else, right? So that's sort of the, the hard part of this conversation is that we're basically being told we cannot include. The full request, right? So how can we trim it in a manner that we're comfortable with and still, you know, uh.
Right.
Be able to go to the voters.
Well, in a fair.
The other, and the other option, I'll throw it out again, is, you know, the projected enrollment decline. You know, if, if that's seventy five students, that's seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, so.
And I would also point out that like to, to me, to my mind, a fair labor contract is one that remains competitive. With our neighbors.
Yeah, we don't know where that's gonna be yet, everybody's facing, everybody's facing constraints. You know, if, if you, if you, uh, look at the, the increases that other districts have. Had in their budgets, the problem isn't that, um, uh, we're falling further behind, it's just that, um. We were already, already behind.
Okay, I'm gonna have to leave in. Minutes, um. I guess you guys can keep talking among yourselves, but what do we want to have for. Our next meeting?
When do we meet next? The third.
The third. So Liz. Question would be. How does, so I understand that you got four and a half or five percent for the increase. From FY twenty six to twenty seven for labor cost, but what do we see? How's it gonna increase the next year, is it still the four and a half to five or are we? You know, are we getting enough people down into that bottom level where it's actually not increasing as much or, I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it's smart, yeah. Go ahead.
I've not done that yet, um, but we also don't know what unit A will be for twenty eight because we haven't, we'll have to bargain it next year. So I could run that with an assumption.
Yeah.
And it would be an assumption probably. Just with cola. Not with. Any changes to the table.
Right.
So we could run that. Yeah.
It won't be much different, but it'd be, it'd be worth one, running to check.
Um, and I'd like to run a couple other scenarios and then what I'd also like to check out is what our sort of average. I'm trying to think about even do it, but like, uh, when we replace someone. Where on the table we're typically replacing, cuz I think that has shifted. A bit since a while back, but it could like tell us a little bit about what we might need to adjust.
Yeah. I think it shifted a lot because.
It has.
Most people are coming in with masters.
Yes, and well, and that's. To some extent, state requirements surrounding licensure adjust changes, but also that's, um. Challenges with regards to hiring particularly in certain areas like special education. And.
It's still, they're coming in.
Higher.
Higher, I mean, if, all I can, with the masters, all I can say is they're definitely in a different lane, but that means that they've got to be. Some number of steps down too, I just don't know where, what that number is. So, yeah.
Okay, we'll do that. Anything else?
Can we talk, can you send me an email of what you need? I mean, of these things, did you need them for tomorrow or, or just in general? Okay, okay, then that's.
I would, actually, the, the graphs that you've made would be helpful tomorrow.
Okay.
And the data you did for out of district would be helpful tomorrow.
Okay.
I think that's it, though.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, unfortunately, I have no minutes and I have to leave, so. Say bye, okay, I'm gonna. Adjourn, everyone?
Yes.
Yes, yes, okay, see you folks in a couple weeks.
Bye.
Bye.